These are the estimates on the Communications and Creative Industries branch. Satry for Commerce and Economic Development. Thank you Chairman. I'd like to spend a few minutes to brief members on the branch. For Communications and Creative Industries, these are our key areas of work. First of all, on the twentieth of February, we started the Phase One consultation of the Broadcasting Ordinance and Telecommunications Ordinance. This is significant because the Broadcasting and Telecommunications Industries need a review of the relevant policies and the removal of barriers. If we can further facilitate the work of various license holders, we would endeavor to do so. And this would be a key area of work going forward. The review has two stages. First, we receive support from Leshco, and at the end of the consultation period, we would consolidate the views, and we would start drafting the bill. I hope that the bill can be completed within the current term Leshco, and I hope that members would support it. After that, we would begin our Phase Two work. And later this year, once we are ready, we would begin the consultation. And so that is about the Telecommunications Ordinance and Broadcasting Ordinance. We have taken in views from the broadcasting sector, and if barriers can be removed on ads etc., there were proposals from the Director of Broadcasting, and I'm sure they would be welcomed by the trade. Another key area of work is to prepare for 5G technology. 5G is not just deployed in telecommunications, and it is an important form of technology infrastructure. We would work with the inefficient Technology Bureau on this. As for the actual implementation of 5G, it is still within our ambit. And and our work will continue after the Spectrum Release Plan announced by the World Radio Communication Conference next year. And once a spectrum is available, it would be made available to prepare for the arrival of 5G. As for the creative industries, the current term administration places much emphasis on the nurturing of creativity. We have a one-off allocation of $1 billion on the Create Smart Initiative. The allocation would exceed the cumulative expenditure over the past years. We hope that various creative industries would be able to develop better and nurture talents. And this would be a key area of work. As for encouraging development of creative industries, whether or not you call them a pillar industry, they are still a key economic driver for us, and there could be collaboration with other industries such as tourism, mice, or in cultural projects. In the coming years, we have a number of cultural projects such as Taikun and the West Kowloon Cultural District. And this would dovetail with the views of the Chairman in the previous session. We also hope to benefit people who currently have no broadband access. And according to the budget, broadband access would be introduced to remote villages, and it would cover 350 villages spanning nine areas in new territories. And after consultation exercise, we would commence our tendering exercise. Our goal is to extend broadband connectivity to every corner of Hong Kong. I'm happy to take in comments and questions from members, five minutes each. First, Mr. Ray Chan. Thank you. I have two questions, both about film. One question number 008. The government indicated that the number of cinemas increased in two recent years, forty-eight in 2016 to 2017, fifty-five. However, the number of cinemas might not reflect the real trend. We should ask the government about the number of seats. And in the 1990s, the number of cinema seats were 160,000, but in recent years, we only had about 30-odd thousand. Can the government share any figures if you cannot provide that today? I hope you can tell us the number of seats in cinemas so that we can analyze the trend. In the past, the government promised to increase the number of cinemas via their policy. For example, at the City Hall Auditorium, cinema facilities could be introduced. Last March, the government announced that at two commercial sites to be sold, the inclusion of a cinema would be included in the lease conditions. What is the progress of those two sites or developments, and would the same be done in the future? Mr. Chan mentioned some figures. As for the number of cinemas, over the past ten years, they remain at about fifty. In the next few years, we might have more cinemas. As for the number of seats, in 2006, the number of seats were 42.5 thousand, and in 2001/07, the number of seats dropped to thirty-seven point four thousand. As for the number of screens, the trend was different. There was a slight increase to 224. So this is about the ecology of the film industry. And it might change with personal habits, and nowadays, more cinemas would go down the high-class route with less seats and a premium environment. So this is one of the trends. What about the land sale conditions at Kai-Tech and Sha Tin for the two government sites that would be open for tender? We have stipulated that a cinema be included. Of course, our bureau is not in charge of the actual land sales, but we expect that sites will be available in the next year or two. Would there be more in the future? We do not know yet. For question 013 on the Film Development Fund. In the Satry's opening speech, he said he would optimize the Film Development Fund for tomorrow is another day. Ms. Teresa Mo won Best Actress in another film. It received an accolade at the thirteenth Osaka Film Festival. However, some people gave this film zero because of its political stance. You might not want to talk about individual cases. So how can we make sure that good films would not would not suffer because of low scores given by assessors who have different political stances? As for the movie you mentioned, it applies for the Film Production Financing Scheme, or the movie Number One, Chongying Street. And there were certain criteria when assessing the film.
At that time, the Assessment Committee looked at the criteria, including creativity, the quality of the script, and also manpower development. And it is considered that it did not comply with the criteria. That is why the application was rejected. However, it won a Best Film Award in Japan. Well, the applicant knew why it was rejected, so there was no political consideration. Next one, Mr. Shi Ka-chun, together with Mr. Ray Chan. I'd like to reply 013. I will be asking about documentaries. In the past few years, I can see young filmmakers making use of images to record the change in our city. There have been a number of products, and I particularly like one that has also enjoyed high acclaim in overseas countries. But the Hong Kong society knows very little about documentaries, and so there is very little support. The Film Development Fund has been supporting feature stories, and it is said that the films must be features or animation films that are shown in Hong Kong cinemas, and they must run for eighty minutes. And the production cost must be less than $25 million. But this is not something that should be applied to documentaries. Very few documentaries would use more than up to $25 million and will not run up to eighty minutes. Even if you talk about Oscar winners, some of them just run for forty minutes or even less. So do they have to be shown in a commercial way in cinemas before something can be regarded as good? I think you should be more flexible in your film policy. The first question is, are there actual measures to support Hong Kong documentaries? Number two. We can see the Director of Broadcasting here, Mr. Leung Ka-wing. First, I'd like to congratulate him on extension of service. But as you know, as the Director, it is important for you to have good relations with your staff and staff associations. I am aware that recently, with regard to the extension of service for a Deputy Director of Broadcasting, I think you have had some arguments with your staff. I'd like you to take the opportunity to explain the rationale and also justifications for extending the service of that Deputy Director. P.S. Thank you. I'd like to talk about the objectives of our policy to promote films. One important objective is that it should be an industry. And we would support the production of local films so they can be for commercial showing. However, this is not the only objective for promoting film development. There is another policy objective, and that is to groom talents. The member mentioned documentaries. Under the Film Development Fund scheme, documentaries can be supported. But because of the commercial showing and also length of the film criteria, only those that comply with the criteria can apply. But as we answered the question on FDF and its future direction, we explained to members that in the last decade or so, there have been major changes in film development, and we have commissioned a consultant now to do a review. One of the elements of the review is to look at new developments in the future, and whether the FDF will have any possibility of promoting it, including documentaries. P.S. I hope you will consider that box office receipts do not necessarily go towards showing that there is value. Well, yes, I'm saying that there may be a way for us to support the production of documentaries. After the consultant has completed the report, we will have a brainstorming session within our department. I hope the eighty minutes will not be hard and fast rule. I hope you will apply flexibility so we can have more documentaries in Hong Kong. I've heard you. The other question, Director of Broadcasting. Director, anything from you, Director? Chairman, Mr. Shi.
The incident you mentioned has to do with our Deputy Director who has reached his retirement age in April. But because of the necessity of the RTHK's operation, the extension of service will be for three months, three months only. In this year, the RTHK has to meet up with a lot of work requirements. Can I please continue? Yes, be quick. You have to speak faster. You want to complete the answer, right?
Yes, I was trying to answer, Mr. Shi, but his time is up. You can go on. This is purely because of our operational need, so we are extending the service for three months. It is not a renewal of contract. Next one. It's my turn. Secretary.
I am now an NPC delegate for the third time. This is my third term, and I have learned something. That is, on the national level, if the NDRC does not put something in its annual plan, no one can dare do anything about something. The worst pillar industry is of utmost importance. Frankly speaking, the PA will always have to mention pillar industries. The budget and the secretaries will also have to work on it. You are talking about impetus. Well, they are not at that level. I'm proposing that you consider this. We can see where Hong Kong is going. Creative industry, cultural industry, IT, all these will be major pillar industries. I hope you will change the four pillar industries into six. There may be other industries that have an impetus, but then if they are pillar industries, they will be maintained and sustained, and you will not abandon those easily. And what I'm talking about is what young people are interested in. If the young people are not interested in something, even if you call it a pillar industry, it doesn't help. So please consider it. I'm referring to 010, a question by Ray Chan. This is about the fashion center. I'd like to complement the P.S. You have now completed the fashion hub in Shangshui Po, and I'd like to say that you have done a good job. But in terms of creative industries, there are three important elements. You must have creativity, the designers. And secondly, R&amp;D. And that is, you change the design, you transform it into a prototype, and three, production. I'm not even talking about promotion and business, okay? Those are the three things. And to be frank, production is not for Hong Kong. There are 1.3 billion people on the mainland, and in Hong Kong, we only have seven million. No one is interested in production. But Hong Kong youngsters are very much into designing. But we elect people to do R&amp;D. Just look at fashion. There are many designers. They all know how to draw. They can produce the design, and then we can produce a prototype, and then we can take it to an exhibition. That is R&amp;D, and then you have to secure orders. But young people don't want to do the technical part. Now, of course, they don't need a university degree to do this, and their language ability doesn't have to be very high either. Many industries are having difficulty with this middle missing link and meaning R&amp;D. For me, my difficulty is that I see a lot of designers, but no one can produce the prototype for me. All the old masters have retired, and very few young ones want to do this. And in fact, they do not have that good technique. So after the design is made, it will be faxed to Dongguan, and a few days later, the prototype will come to Hong Kong. And we can only talk on the phone about how to improve it. But in Paris, you have the designer, the dresser, and the patiner. They are all in the same building. But we don't have these people. You have to find these people. We have the talent importation scheme, but then they will be people with university degrees. But very often, people doing R&amp;D do not require a university degree. There are so many of these people on the mainland, but they cannot come to Hong Kong. The designers have to go to China all the time. So think about this. If you want to promote creative and cultural industries, you have to think about this missing link in the middle. Frankly, this has no conflict with the Hong Kong labor market because we just don't have these people in Hong Kong. I hope you will really think about this. Hong Kong is a fashion hub, and we want to do better. Can you reply concisely? You only give me seven seconds. Well, say something. Just say you will. Two things, Chairman.
I see eye to eye with your point on pillar industries, and the things that you listed, those have been addressed in detail, both in the PA and the budget. You remember, we have devoted fourteen paragraphs on creative industries, and we are putting aside $1 billion. And then INT, and then tourism. And even mice, it is taking up 3.5% of the GDP. It is quite close to creative industries and also medical services. I was telling you in the last session that we are not only talking about the figure from four to six. No, I don't want figures. I want the name. Call them pillar industries. So what is important is that in the PA, in the budget, if these are mentioned in these documents, that would already represent a major policy commitment. I also agree with the second part of what you said. That is why, when we want to set up this fashion hub in Shangshui Po, we are including prototyping. It is happening. If you look at the Textiles Training Institute in Kowloon Bay, they have a prototyping workshop. But as you said, to young designers, prototyping is important to them, and so we are including that element. But we are adopting a two-pronged approach, but indeed, many of these people are not in Hong Kong. Well, I hope that with regard to the immigration of talent scheme, please do not require a university degree. Mr. Jeremy Tam.
I would like to refer to 022. 002. This is about creative industries. You must consider the development of the animation industry. In your reply, it seems compared to other investments, you are only investing a few million dollars every year, and only 31 million for a few years together. It is not that Hong Kong do not have these talents. I don't know whether you have heard about or watched a very famous animation movie. It is recommended by many people in the profession, and even the media and electronic media are recommending it, and they are now having crowdfunding to kickstart the project. They are almost there for a long time, but there is no support whatsoever. Say, for example, the so-called Fifth Animation Support Program, $2.66 million. They are not supported under this, and their estate studio had to close because of rent hikes. I'd like to say that Hong Kong has these people, but looking at your projects here, you are doing it the other way around. There are these people, and they have a certain association, and they make their requirements, so you support them. But I was quoting another very successful example, and yet you give them very little support. And in fact, I have not heard you do anything about it.
Thank you very much. We list out the projects funded in the last three years in the animation and comics sector through the Create Smart Initiative. As I said, the CSI is market-driven because no one knows better than the sector themselves what kind of support is needed. So any funding would certainly help the development of the sector. You asked about the animation and comics sector and the amounts of funding allocated in the last three years. But when you look at the $1 billion allocation under the CSI, in the past, we granted $920 million for digital entertainment, including animation and comics. The amount granted was $137 million. You said you will only fund projects propagated by organizations or associations or societies. For projects already started, the organizations or bodies can still promote the project. So as long as you are approached, how can you define what is meant by an organization? Any organization that falls within one of the seven sectors under the CSI can make an application. My question was, we don't want to end up like the treatment of the Karate Association. We are talking about practitioners that they have to fulfill the funding criteria of the CSA. And the effect of the project cannot only benefit the organization itself. It must benefit the entire sector. So that is one of our key policy objectives. How would you define benefiting the whole trade or sector? For example, for the Animation Support Program, how many people must benefit in order for it to be eligible? And we have a support program for graduates or the Hong Kong Digital Entertainment Industry Fresh Graduate Support Scheme. Are you going to fund a producer of an animation? They must fulfill the funding criteria. Mr. Chan.
For departure, the animator Kong Ke was funded under the Animation Support Program to produce this short. And after he won the award, he wants to create a longer animation. That is why he resorted to crowdfunding. So in conclusion, the program was successful. Mr. Shi, at the C question and answer session last week, I expressed the concerns of the business sector on their situation today. Costs are very high. The government has been promoting the abolishment of the MPF offsetting mechanism. As for the person-to-person telecommunication sales, the government is regulating them, and now and today, they are promulgating a cooling-off period. So I'm sure the concerns of myself and the business sector are well-grounded for person-to-person telemarketing calls. And very often, members of the public are bothered by these sales persons in the form of certain products or
in the form of certain products or bank loans. Last week, Mr. Christopher Chang asked, well, if he, if a broker helps provide, is currently providing services, can that person try to sell or offer other services? That might no longer be possible in the future. You should actually target the banks or the financial institutions who are making fraudulent calls. You should try to catch these people. If you, even if you come up with new legislation, those are calls made from outside of Hong Kong. There's no way you can regulate them. You can only target those within Hong Kong. And the government is trying to introduce a cooling-off period for certain industries. For example, fitness gyms or beauty salons. First of all, it's unfair to label them. And these are very legitimate companies. Some people who have bought packages because they were forced to stay in a location or the, or they were stripped naked and that's why they had no choice. But we have the Trade Descriptions Ordinance. That is some, the such coercive signing or agreement is banned under the T D O. So if you create a cooling-off period, let's say if it's seven days for beauty or massage parlors, they might start taking guests from six thirty. So very often, the sessions are fully booked, so the customers might buy packages. If you have a seven-day cooling-off period, what would happen to these companies? Of course, they would provide any service you want in the first seven days. What about the eighth day onwards? There's no way you can, there's no way customers can do anything. So you are, you would give the impression to customers that they do not need to think before they shop or buy. These are, we are talking about grown-ups who must be responsible for their own actions. If you give them a seven-day or fourteen-day cooling-off period, well, the cooling-off period would not be forever. So after they purchase the packages, some unscrupulous companies might decide to not offer any services or refunds from the eighth day onwards. And the business environment would become much more complicated because people can come back for refunds. What about the commission to the sales persons and things like that? I asked the chief executive last week. Well, I told her about the concerns of the business sector and this is something we must think about. Well, I will give you ten seconds to respond. Thank you. For the first part of Mr. Shiu's question, I think we cannot mix up fraudulent crimes with person-to-person telemarketing calls, which might be disturbing to some people. So for the first two questions, we must deal with a number of issues within the legislative framework. And that is how we define the relevant trades, the implementation details, exemptions, penalties, reviews, et cetera. So these are something we would proceed. For person-to-person telemarketing calls, we have started the drafting work and we would come back to Ledgeco on that. As for the cooling-off period, the Consumer Council would announce their recommendation tomorrow based on their study. And after we read the report, we might have a discussion at Ledgeco. I forgot to declare that I engage in fashion and retail. Mr. Wei Lao. I'd like to ask about question zero zero nine about R T H K. I would tune into R T H K channels from time to time. What is the question number zero zero nine? Sometimes I would tune into R T H K channels. I wonder if the government would consider using R T H K's resources to promote local sport for football, basketball, et cetera. A lot of people would like to watch these games, but there is no TV channel in Hong Kong that broadcasts local sport events apart from weekend highlights. Well, in the past, we had the A T V. Now it's back again. They would broadcast local games. I thought the broadcaster would receive, would pay the football teams to broadcast the matches. But in Hong Kong, it's the other way around. The teams would pay the broadcaster instead. I think we should allow more people in Hong Kong to watch these games so that they can support local sport teams. Can we have a dedicated channel for local sports under R T H K? I watch volleyball games, badminton. Commissioner or Director of Broadcasting. Since R T H K secured the full channels, we tried to secure sport broadcasting, especially for local games. Over the past year, we approached different organizations for different sport games. And last year, we broadcast some inter-school badminton, marathon and basketball games. In the past financial year, we broadcast a total of nineteen games, not including replays. And they have proved popular because some students and schools are able to watch the competitions they take part in. In the last financial year, we showed nineteen games and there were additional replays. So in the eighteen to nineteen financial year, we plan to broadcast fifty games. And these include the inter-school basketball marathon, inter-school badminton championships and open volleyball marathon, Asian volleyball challenge, et cetera. And R T H A only recently launched full TV broadcasting. We must be careful in allocating resources for live sport games. I'm very happy to hear that. Last year, you broadcast nineteen games. I understand that this was only the start. And I was actually referring to a full-time channel like the Zhuzhang Sport Channel where people can tune into local sports all the time. And for football and basketball alone, there are more than fifty games a year.
What's about local soccer matches apart from inter-school matches? In the past year, we have worked really hard on trying to broadcast local soccer matches. But there is a lot of difficulty and we are working on it. Well, if necessary, I can ask the Hong Kong Football Association to start a discussion with you. Next, Charles Mok. Can I refer to zero three three asked by Claudia Mo? This is about R T H K as well. Very happy to hear Mr. Edward Lau throwing his weight behind R T H K. We want R T H K to produce better programming and I am happy that the D A B will support the R T H K in securing enough resources, including building Broadcasting House. In twenty fourteen until now, you will know that that was in January twenty fourteen and has been more than four years. And from the reply, I can see that you are still discussing it. In other words, there has been no progress. We knew that other departments would like to also use the building, but there was no consensus. Is it that no one likes to share the building with you? The Democratic Cam supported public broadcasting in Hong Kong. We want you to maintain your very good brand and even improve. And in recent years, you have been doing more and more, especially on the side of television broadcasting. You will need a lot of space. You will need new equipment. I'm very disappointed in reading the reply that in the last three years, the R T H K has had ten meetings with other departments about planning and use of the building. But no matter how many meetings you have, the important thing is to come up with a proposal. If you continue with the discussion and yet no other departments would like to share the building with you, does it mean this will be delayed on end? Well, no D A B members are here, but it seems they also make requirements of you. How can you fulfill the aspirations of the public? And your staff are becoming more and more unhappy. There are more and more conflicts between staff and the director. And I think part of the conflict has to do with resources. I think the director is also in a very difficult position because he has no control over it. Secretary, can you help them solve the problem? Secretary.
As we said in our reply to question zero three three, first, the new Broadcasting House originated in twenty fourteen. We made an independent proposal to Ledgeco, but unfortunately, that was not supported by P W S C and it could not continue. Members agreed with the need for a new building. But I still remember, many members said that they had strong views about the cost and the scale. On the one hand, the project estimate as proposed was for R T H K to have enough operating expenses as a broadcaster. And of course, it would be different from an average office building. And if the cost and the scale have to be limited, then the second best option is to co-use the building or share use of the building. We actually found one government department, but in the end, the two could not coexist and we will have to continue looking. As you know, in the administration, it is a peak period for us to identify new buildings. We have another project of demolishing the Three Towers in Wan Chai for expansion of Hong Kong C E C. And therefore, we have a big need and we are coming to Ledgeco for funding support. We'll continue to do it, but if we have to comply with members' requirement at an early stage, we would have a more difficult task. But even so, it doesn't mean R T H K will not continue operating. And I think the director will not agree that R T H K will not continue broadcasting. We are working on making good the deficiencies in the existing building and we are plowing in resources. And we can give you figures to show that refurbishment and maintenance of the building and also we are spending on it and also we are spending on other aspects of R T H K. Well, allow the secretary to complete his answer, but I cannot see any light at the end of the tunnel. If you can't come to a consensus with other departments, does it mean you will just continue looking and discussing? I hope you will come up with a more creative alternative. Maybe you can come back to talk to members and try to convince them that maybe you can broadcast more soccer matches and will allow you to have a complete new Broadcasting House. I hope you will not give up. Next, Mr. Ma Feng Kwok. And we have some time left and members who would like to have a second round will have one minute. Mr. Ma Feng Kwok, two questions. Zero two eight. Create Smart Initiative. One billion dollars more for Create Smart. I welcome it. And fifty percent will be for the training of talent and support of startups. But if I look at previously approved cases, some of those have nothing to do with certain industries. I don't know why. Is it that the industries or sectors did not put in any applications? Or is it that those applications just did not comply with the criteria and so they were rejected? I'd like to ask you how you can encourage and promote different industries to make use of C S I so they can help to also have startups. P S. Thank you. The C S I is a market-driven initiative. The seven sectors and their associations or institutes will have to advocate projects and put in applications. Every year, the sectors may come to apply and some of the applications will be approved, others rejected. If we look at history, two-thirds of the applications were approved and one-third were rejected. The majority of rejections had to do with the discrepancy between the project proposed and the direction or objectives of C S I or that the projects would only benefit that particular institute and not the entire industry. And maybe some of the projects were just duplicated. Since the projects have to be market-driven, the industry have to come up with quality projects before they could be vetted. If you look at architecture, you can see no projects submitted in the last two years. And so we will have no opportunity to support them. But the promotion of creative industries is done by the Create Hong Kong Office. I don't need more information. I'm just asking why there were zero projects supported in certain industries. Well, they did not apply. No, some of them applied, but they were rejected, as I explained. Well, I know, but I don't think you have done enough because you also want to support the development of these industries. Can Create Smart be more active or proactive to encourage the sectors to do more? Mr. Zhang, actually, I have a second question, Chairman. Mr. Ma, I'd just like to say that in the new injection of one billion dollars, we have already said that not less than fifty percent should be for startups and the training of talents. We have received many views from the seven sectors. We told them that apart from school training, maybe they can have overseas internship and even competitions. And we can support those and we are promoting this. We have not seen a lot of training programs before. Chairman, can I go on to my second question? And in my second round, I also would like to use it. Zero five nine, please. In the reply, it said that they have broadcast a few dozens of inter-school, inter-variety matches. I support that, and the director said that more will be done. I have a minor point. I'd like to know whether we have to pay any transmission fee for such inter-school championship matches. And also technically, since we want to work more with the young people, there are also inter-school dancing festival and music festival and the finals. Can you consider producing programs? I'm not asking you to broadcast them live, but since students take part in these large-scale programs, hopefully, they can watch themselves on TV, and they will be even more interested as a result. Director. For inter-school sports events, we will work proactively on it. We are also looking into track and field competitions. But it requires the setting up of equipment. As you know, there will be many events taking place at the same time in the track and field venue. Now, I'm talking about the culture side. Well, actually, on the culture side, radio and television Hong Kong have worked a lot on these programs. You mentioned the inter-school music festival. Actually, in this period, we are showing many different competitions of this year, just this week on TV. And also, we have the tertiary institutes debate, and the finals would be covered on TV. Sorry, there is no time. We have three more members. Mr. Ray Chen. Oh oh two, please. The support of the government towards animation. In the past three years, eighteen projects were supported by Create Smart or CSI, including thirty-one million dollars. But the industry has told us that these are cosmetic. You have the animation park or the improvement to the Avenue of Stars, and you are not really helping the industry. I hope you know that there is a sharp drop of people working in animation. In the peak period, they have produced fifty animation magazines every week, but not only five. I used to be buying many more, but I buy a few now. I don't have much time, but let us talk about the mainland. Hong Kong animation productions are regarded as overseas productions, like Japanese, but actually, we are in the same country. Mr. Shuka Chen, thank you for allowing me a second round. Just now, the director of broadcasting was so smart. He resorted to wordplay, and he said that it was an extension of service, not renewal of contract. Okay, I will ask you, what are the criteria for extension of duty and also renewal of contract? And also acting in a post. Some people can have extension or renewal, but then some people have been acting in a position for two years before given a substantive promotion. What are the criteria for extension of service? In the coming three years, what will this deputy director be actually doing? Twenty seconds.
This is for operational need. In the coming three months, we have to face challenges in the next half year. We are going to launch major-scale projects, and within the civil surface, extension of surface is not uncommon. For me, in January twenty fourteen, PWSC voted on the new Broadcasting House. I supported it. I found it very regrettable. If they have to look for another department, and if they fail to do it, this will be here for another ten years. I would not agree, and I would urge the administration to come back with the project, and I believe the voting result will be different. I have been to RTHK a few times. They are really in a very difficult position. They don't have space, and the equipment is outdated.
I earlier talked about prototyping. Secretary, can you try to relax the mainland admissions scheme so that persons without a degree could be welcomed or accepted? And if they could not find a job, they would go back to the mainland, and that would also hamper the careers or future of talents. As for whether imported labor is the best approach, this is something worth studying. They are, they are talking about recruiting people but not about the quality of the manpower. So the session is coming to an end. I'd like to thank the secretary and your team. You have all been very positive. Thank you.